2020 at seven o'clock, online Zoom meeting. Kind of a roll call, please. Nope, not yet. First, I want to mention that when someone makes a resolution and the person that seconds it, would the person that seconds the resolution, please raise their hand so we know who made the second? And then when a motion is made, the person that makes the motion, please raise their hand and then the person that seconded, raise their hand so that we know who makes the motions. So if you would do that, I'd appreciate it. So now we can do the invocation by Cindy and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. Great eternal, we come before you this evening, asking for your guidance and wisdom to lead each one of us at this council meeting. Help us to make the best decision for the city of Amro and the residents of Amro. Amen.
Amen.
And then the pleasant pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please Barb.
Todd Jari.
Here.
Cindy Ostrander.
Here.
Todd Sumromantic.
Here.
James Brash. Jason Reeves.
Present.
And Tim Doolittle.
Here.
All present. Approval of tonight's agenda, a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
Who is seconded?
We raising that hand?
I raised it.
And I saw. All my fingers are in the air.
We have a motion and second for approval of tonight's agenda. Any discussion? If not, those in favor of the more agenda, signify by saying aye.
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 Or say no. Agenda is approved. Citizens from from the audience, anybody have anything to say?
I just have a quick question. A couple of people have been reaching out to me, Justin Schmick, by the way, asking about, we earlier talked about chickens, possibly bringing that ordinance back around. I realize COVID-19 is happening. We don't have time for chickens right now. But I kind of want to just get the ball rolling a little bit on my end. I assume kind of what you want to see if that ever comes up is, you know, rundown what other municipalities municipalities are doing as far as their laws and regulations on that kind of stuff. Is there anything else that I should be gathering before we come in front of you with a request like that?
I think we have a lot of that information already, Justin. I don't know who has it all.
I have it all. I actually have the ordinance language and everything done. We just would have to bring it back, but I think I don't know if the timeline of two years is passed yet.
Okay, I'll just pop in at some point and talk to you about it then Barb.
And make a phone call first, please.
Well, sure.
And let, do you know what, what would the rule be on that?
I don't recall whether it was a specific action of the common council that there was a waiting period, Barb.
Yeah, they, they voted it down.
Right? Did they set a time to not reconsider?
No, but isn't there something about you can't bring something back to the agenda unless someone who voted in the negative brings it back?
Yeah, it wasn't voted down in the council. It was voted down in the planning commission.
It never, it never got to the council?
No.
I believe it was on the agenda at one point, but I had to do some.
It was on the council. It was mostly voted down because they didn't do a very good petition.
No. Planning Commission sent it forward and the council voted it down, Jason.
They did actually vote it?
That's the way it was. It was, it was sent back to the planning commission to hammer out some results. And the planning commission said, if we don't answer these questions, we don't have to deal with it.
I don't know. We'll have to look.
You can look at the minutes. Back to Barb's point. We have a new council. So I do not think there's any prohibition against it coming back to the council.
Okay.
Okay. Then Justin, get a hold of Barb and then she'll get you information. Okay, thanks.
Awesome, thanks.
Anybody else have anything?
I had something I'd like to mention and I thank you for being allowed to join the meeting. Our parks and that.
Your name and address, please.
Paul Turner, 731 North Webster. I'm up by the school. What, the reason I say that is I'm just concerned, you know, the playgrounds haven't opened up yet and things like that. And it just seems like we're not being compliant with this, the, the verdict that was put down by the Supreme Court. And I just wondered when it was going to happen because I think it's time. I think parents can be, keep their children as much as they can. You know, distance, social distancing and things like that. But yet they're still closed. Now, I know that there's money and there's water and everything like that, but I think it's time and the same thing with the, the small businesses, they gotta be hurting. And I'm not a small businessman and, but, but for the same fact, I try and do as much business here as I can. And they're not open. I did see the barber shop was open the other day, but other businesses, I don't know if there's their own volition or still staying closed. But I understand that there's, it's very difficult for them and you're talking bankruptcy and things like that. And I'd like to see us get back to, we have a very few or limited number of cases of the virus here in, in, in Amro and even in, in Oskoosa and that. And compared to the rest of state, we're, we're not up in there. But then a lot of them there are opening and they've opened the state parks already and, you know, but I think the parents can take care of their children and you know, wipe down things and things like that. But I'd just, just like to see us try and get back to some normalcy there too. And that's basically all I know.
Just to answer you, Paul, tonight we are having that conversation as part of my section of the agenda at the end. We're talking about many of the things that the city has and whether we're opening and so on. Parks are one of those things. Playground equipment is one of those things. The just to clarify the legalities, what happened at the court level, we've had opinions from the attorney general. We've had opinions from League of Municipalities that state, yes, we can close things. We've, we've often closed the parks because of flooding and things like that. But chances are tonight that, that is going to change. We're going to open them, but that's not my decision. That's something that has to happen tonight at this meeting. If you want to stay until the end, you're welcome to do so. As far as the businesses, we have no control over when the business is open. All of them are able to open right now. The city is not telling them they can't open. We've given out several business loans at zero percent interest to help them stay afloat. And those that are not open yet are, are in the process of getting ready to open. I know a couple of them had some projects that they were building even today so that they could get open again.
Will the community center be opening soon? I know we participate over there.
The community center generally closes when the schools close and right now the schools are under, still under state law to stay closed until the end of June. I'm assuming the community center is doing the same. That's, we own the building, but we don't run the community center. They have a separate board of directors. So we, if, if they want to open, that's their control, not ours. Okay?
I'll check with them then. Thank you.
Sure.
I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Any, anybody else?
I'm just wondering, Mr. Mayor, given the fact that the citizen is on, I don't have a problem if we move that item up on the agenda.
Linda, are you ready?
You just want to talk about the playground equipment itself, or you want to talk about everything because they're locked?
Everything considered that you're going to consider. We might as well do it now.
Alright. We do have our guy from Ellers on here as well, so. I sent an email out. I'm gonna find it. Well. Close it. Alright, well. Let's just deal with a few of the things that, that we're talking about, whether to open. City Hall did open yesterday afternoon. We had a lot of it ready already from when we were doing elections and things were closing down in the beginning. So we got the plastic at the window. We've got the social distancing on the floors. We've got the hallways are blocked. You can come down by appointment or invitation, but otherwise we have them blocked so that people stay at the plastic. Otherwise they tend to walk around it and talk, talk to people on the other side of it like it's a wall or something. And we're basically keeping the other hallway closed unless Marty's here and needs to visit with building inspectors. So it was pretty simple. We also have a no contact table at, in between the doors. We've kept that there for those who don't want to come all the way in. All of the forums are there. There is a way that they can pay their bills. There is pens. There's envelopes. There is a drop box and everything there. So City Hall is open. The one item that, that resident is here to talk about was the playgrounds, whether to open those or leave them closed. They closed as part of the state directives that playgrounds should close. Our emergency declaration is on the agenda tonight to, as to whether or not you want to extend it, but with that we could make decisions without you and then have you ratify them afterwards. And because it's expired, I realized that when we started talking about everything opening up, I looked at it and it was expired. Because it's expired, I did not take all the tape down off of the playground equipment. I waited for you guys to make a decision as to whether or not you wanted to see those playground equipment open. Actually, there was already people on him on Friday night and and I told him it was closed, but they told me it wasn't. And they stepped right over the yellow tape and proceeded to play. So so either case, I'm leaving it to you guys to tell me to take the tape down. So we'll start with that.
Anybody has something to say? Tim?
I think we should take them down and open them up. Like the sign that you have on here, Linda, this playground open, use at your own risk. I think we should put a couple of them around every one of them. Be easy enough to make on a computer and laminate them. I would recommend that we put a couple of extra garbage cans around them with like plastic liner bags. So if people want to take and wipe things down, they have a place readily handy to throw away their wet wipes or paper towel or whatever to use to wipe it down before they put their kids on it. Because the point Linda just made, it was technically to shut down. People were walking through it anyhow. They're gonna do it. So let's just be, let's be proactive rather than reactive.
My question to you, Lot, is do we put signage up saying that you play at your own risk because of the COVID or, I mean, you're playing at your own risk anyway. So what, what is the legal aspect of that? Is there one?
Ultimately saying use at your own risk has always been the situation.
Right.
So I don't, I, I don't have any problem with the notice that you're giving. I think it's intelligent to suggest to the public that they follow guidelines that are out there available regarding social distancing and wearing masks and all the rest of those. But they're suggestions only at this point in time.
Right.
Unless the city of Amro wants to get involved in legislation or the mayor wants to declare some particulars, which the league opened the door to for municipalities. With all the counties, I don't think there's any county restrictions in play anymore that I'm aware of, other than maybe Dane. Might be the only county. So moving forward, I think is the only direction. But I don't have a problem with putting up signs that reference the CDC guidelines.
Alright.
Just we can't make them rules or we can't make them requirements, but we can certainly suggest. And maybe that the sign should say, we urge you to follow rather than please follow. We urge you to follow, but we can't require them.
Linda, there are guidelines out there for things to open up, right, from CDC?
Yep.
W E D C has a lot.
Yep, and W E D C does too. So, you know, on our, on our website, certainly we can put those out there.
Gracie, you need to hang up.
Any questions that anybody has? Essentially, we took the same action in Ripon. We've opened up everything in Ripon.
So if you want to make a motion on that, we can deal with the rest of it later.
Okay, fair enough. And then we can keep moving.
Jim, you made a motion, second. Todd, any more discussion? Any more discussion? Roll call, please Barb.
Todd Jari.
I raised his hand. He's muted.
Okay.
Can't see you.
Cindy Ostrander.
Aye.
Todd Sumromantic.
Aye.
James Brash.
Aye.
Jason Reeves.
Aye.
And Tim Doolittle.
Aye.
Motion carried. Is that it for now, Linda?
Yeah, we'll do the rest later. That's fine.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, we'll move on. Next item is a proclamation. Declaring June Armory High School Senior Class Month, and I'll read that. The city of Amro, Office of the Mayor proclamation. Whereas Armory High School seniors make our public school great by their participation in academic sports, extra circular activities and community minus. And whereas teachers work to open our students' active minds to new ideas, creative, creativities, vision, knowledge and dreams. And whereas Armory High School Senior Class keeps the Wisconsin values alive by laying the foundation for good citizenship and perseverance in a time of uncertainty due, due to COVID-19. And whereas Armory High School Senior Class will be our future listeners, learners, explorers, role models, motivators, mentors and leaders. And whereas the Armory Community supports and congratulates all the students who will continue to influence us along after this current crisis has ended and school days have become memories. And now therefore, let it be resolved that I, Steve Youngworth, Mayor of the City of Amro, proclaim the month of June 2020 to be Armory High School Senior Class Month and dedicate this proclamation to all the hardworking students that have pushed to online learning opportunities in order to complete their high school education that will serve themselves, family, community, faith and our future together. And while effectively social distancing during a health pandemic. Be it resolved that I hereby declare June 2020 as Armory High School Senior Class Month in the city of Armory, Wisconsin. I will urge that we all support, supportive, as a supportive community, give observant this month by taking time to recognize the unique experiences of these seniors and to wholeheartedly acknowledge the impact that these high school seniors have in our lives now and the impact they will establish and implement for our joint fut, joint futures. And witness therefore, I have undo, undo, to do, set my signature on this proclamation and cause a city seal to be set forth on this 19th day of May 2020. And I have a motion for that, please.
The move. Second.
Second by Tim. Any discussion? Any comments? Um. I'm going to present this. I don't know who to present it to. I know they're going to be doing stuff. Joel, do you have information on that? Joel?
I'd probably get it to the superintendent or Daniel Schmick, the principal.
Are they going to be doing other activities, you know?
Um, not that I know of for sure.
Okay.
But I can find out though.
Yeah, because I heard, are we doing banners or?
Yeah, they're going to do banners. I think they come in Friday, so hopefully next week they'll be put up.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. I've got that good looking principal in the other room. Do you want me to go get her for you?
I'll stay in contact with Joel. Thanks, Justin. All, Tony.
There was a virtual walkthrough on Thursday and Friday last week and then on Monday they had virtual speeches from Valley Victorian, Steve.
Okay, thanks. All those in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Or say no. Motion carried. Thanks. Motion to adopt the minutes of May 5th.
Move.
Moved by Todd, seconded by second. Jason. Any discussion on the minutes for May 5th? If not, all those in favor of the minutes for May 5th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say no. Motion carried. Finance and personnel, Cindy.
Move to the floor, resolution 200519-1 expenditures.
Again. Motion by Cindy, seconded by Jason. Discussion. Discussion on the bills. If not, roll call, please Barb.
Todd Jari.
Aye.
Cindy Ostrander.
Aye.
Todd Sumromantic.
Aye.
James Brash.
Aye.
Jason Reeves.
Aye.
And Tim Doolittle.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next Cindy.
Move to the floor, resolution 200519-4, resolution awarding the sale of 1,960,000 general obligation corporate purpose bond serial 2028 or series 2028.
Moved by Cindy.
Second.
Second by Todd. Discussion.
You received an email today that updated the resolution. Changing the resolution, awarding the sale because we've received the bond to $1,870,000. And Dave Ferris is here from Ellers to talk to us about the bids today.
Is the best way for me to kind of navigate through to tell you the page number that my report says, Linda? Is that best?
Sure, I can put them up on the screen if you'd rather.
Okay. I can tell you what page I'm on then, so.
Yeah, actually. Do you all have it in front of you? Otherwise I'll have to pull it up. Okay, let me, it'll take me a second.
You're gonna make everybody like wait for such an exciting presentation.
Big buildup.
Wish I had a little music behind me.
Usually I have this ready. I did not do that, of course.
Should be packet page 25.
We'll pack it up first. Still thinking, hang on. Though this doesn't have.
You're in the, yeah, you're in the, the official statement right now.
Yeah.
Did, did my sale day make the, so their report make this, the packet?
No, but let me open that too.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not going to talk out of the official statement at all.
Okay.
That's for light reading later on, folks. Some really exciting stuff in that one too. We'll do it right after the meeting. I mean, the only thing that would maybe I'll do that would be an audit report, so.
Excellent stuff.
Because those are exciting too.
Almost there. So you want the sale day report?
Yep. Think you need a faster computer?
Sure.
All in favor?
Alrighty.
Alright, you might as well scoot to the next page. Okay. So first of all, thank you for letting me be here to present. I'll go back to the page one. You're, you're ahead of me there. Okay, good. Thanks, thank you for letting me present the sale day report to you. I think you're going to be very happy with the results. You know, it's been a crazy couple of months. You know, we, we were, I was at the meeting two months ago and, and a lot has gone on since then. You know, we've had, you know, we've had to redo the, the initial resolution. We've had somebody threaten to do the permissive referendum, didn't carry through with it. We've changed the dollar amount. So there's been a lot of work in this one and, and thankfully today we're, we're getting to the point where we're going to put this to bed. We just have to wait for quarrels to close it. So hopefully nothing happens from today until then, right Linda?
Yeah, God.
It's been fun. So what, what, what transpired earlier today is we got six bids, which is really very good. We want to see at least three and you had six today and, and so that was outstanding. One thing that you noticed when Linda analyzed this is that the amount of the bonds, the amount of the bonds went down from 1,960 to 1,870. And that was because not only the rates being good, but they also, the, the underwriter threw a bunch of premium at the, the issue as well. And that's kind of one of their tricks to make. It's a more attractive to investor and when we get to, when we get to where the rates are, I'll show you how they kind of, kind of make that happen. The other thing is, is you know, we started out two months ago with 2,020 on that night. We, we kind of scrambled a little bit to, to real, figure out whether we could add 100,000 to it. And as you can tell, we've gone from 2,020 down to 1,870. So it's been, it's quite a, quite a change and you'll see in the numbers how that's affected it. The low bidder is Northland Securities. And if you just want to go to the next page, Linda is just to kind of show the bidders. So Northland Securities came in at 1.8293% of the true interest rate. And the, the, the underwriters on here, the six that bid are listed in order of lowest to highest true interest rate. And so the, the low bid was the 1.83 and the high bid is on the next page by Huntington Securities at 2.28. Because the rates have been so crazy, we actually had some rates in that were kind of taken and affect some of the things we had seen. And so really, when you look at that high bid, that's actually still lower than our planning run. So that, that goes to show you that in the last, you know, since, since we talked, Linda and I talked last week, the rates kind of have stabilized some and you'd actually ended up, not only with the high bid being better than the planning rate, but you also saved about $61,000 on top of that high bid. So that low bid at 1.83 is about $61,000. You want to go back to page one just for a little bit? And you can see on the, on the, I tried to point at my screen like you'd see me doing it. This, you can see where the 61,000 comes up. So the, like I said, the, the, they threw about an $85,000 re-offering premium, it's called. And, and when, when I get done with this page, I'll show you how that affects the rates and how, how affects the, the rates for the investor versus what we pay. You know, the yields, and, and this is where it comes in. You know, you're going to see interest rates on the next page that they bid like in the three percents, but because of that premium, the yields on the rates and they show it on that page are like 0.9%. So it's, it's, they give you the money ahead of time. You know, the yields, and this is where it comes in, you know, you're gonna see interest rates on the next page that they bid, like in the 3%, but because of that premium, the yields on the rates, and they show it on that page, are like 0.9%. So it's, they give you the money ahead of time, and we use that money to downside, downsize the issue by $90,000. So it was really a benefit to you. You'll see your total finding, spanning, financing costs are better than what we had updated the numbers to, and that's on a schedule coming up as well. The future and present value stuff I will talk about when we get to the savings on the refunding, and I'll talk a little bit more about what that is. I think you can go to the next page then, Linda. Okay, so that top, that top bidder, you can see there's a rate, and then there's a re-offering rate. So we only really wanted 1,960 to start, and they gave us 2,028,000. So we took that additional amount over what we needed, and we reduced the size of the bid. And so the, the interest rate on the bonds that are out in the market are going to say 3%, so that the investors want to buy them, but as far as what, when they gave you the money, they, it basically reduced how much the interest rate was in your hands, but they did that by having that cash that they threw at you. So your, your bonds are gonna be, you're gonna pay 3%, but they're giving you a whole bunch upfront to reduce the size of the bond, so in essence, you ended up with a, a nice savings, and I'll show you that on the next page, coming up page. So once you head to page four, there you go. So this is what we showed you in the right column. We showed you in the beginning of March, before everything happened, because I was at your building that day, and we were at 2,020, and as you can tell, the, the Miller Park project's costs went down. We had a little change in the recreation grant that got solidified a little bit. The playground stayed the same. The rest, the rest of the project costs were basically the same with the refunding as well. The refunding, we took a look at your 2012 A-bonds, and we, we thought we saw a really good opportunity for savings, and I think based on what I showed you last, in March, you're gonna see that we did even better than we thought we were going to. So the other thing that came into play is the cost, so what the bond council said it was gonna cost, and our fee, and, and a couple other costs in there were a little lower. The discount is what the underwriter keeps to compensate themselves for doing the deal. When we did the planning run, we always put it in at the top end that they could take. They did not take it all, so you ended up saving $6,000, about there, 5,000 something, but that's a, you know, that's a bond that we were able to knock off because they didn't take all of the fee. Then the re-offering premium, as I talked about before, was the way that they kind of make the interest rates look more attractive to the investor, but it, it gives you a good deal because we're able to shrink the size, so you're not paying interest on as big of a principal amount. And then you can see at the bottom, the difference between March and today is quite a bit. What we really went to the market with is not 1,960, based on our reducing the project cost, but we were able to knock 90,000 off of that reduced project cost amount, so real good results. Why don't you go on to the next page? This is a lot of numbers, and I'll just tell you what's important on this page. Basically, the section on the left before what would be a pink column, but it looks kind of yellowish-orange, I guess, is where we were before we issued, or we sold the bonds today. So that was basically what your tax rate would be. If you took your tax bill and you took the equalized value or the market value and multiplied it by that rate that's in the debt service tax rate column, that would be pretty close to how much you pay on your property for taxes on debt that the, the city has. The next section is the new issue that we just issued today. There's, that's the structure. There's a little higher payments in the beginning because of the refunding amounts, and, and I'll show you that on the next page, and then the, what the payments later on are more related to the, not only the playground, but the Miller Park. As far as how that whole new issue affected, you can see that we went from $1.26 in 2021, if I can see that right, to $1.92 with the new debt on top. When we came to you in March, that number was more like $1.97, so there is a little bit of a, a reduction in how much the, the issue was going to affect you. And, and actually, each of the lines after that, with your declining tax rate, came down as well with the final results as well. So that effect, that, that helped tax rate be not only less, but you can see it, it flows downwards, the numbers are getting smaller, and the reason that we have it that way is so when you consider doing projects in the future, you'll be able to have a spot to put that, that new debt service into when it comes time to do that next project. The next page is just the breakout of the, this one doesn't fit quite as well. This is the breakout of the total bond. You've got a couple different purposes. The 735,000 is the Miller Park project, then you have the playground, and then the refunding, which I'll show you the savings on that coming up. That was basically the 2012 bonds, which had a higher interest rate, and we replaced them with the new bond, which ended up cutting the, you know, you were at 1,050, now we're at 975,000. So we were able to cut down the size of the bond as well. And then the total bond, which was back on that last page, that repayment schedule you see to the right should have matched that last page. On the next page is actually the savings, so the amount of the payments left when we went into this was 1,130. You, you were able to downsize because of that premium that we got to 975,000. The far right column shows you how much we told you, we thought we could save you back in March, which is a 32,000, and we actually, with the rates that came in today and the premium, we're able to double that plus. And so on that issue, we were able to save about $81,000 of principal and interest over the next, looks like nine years. You know, the, the interest, the present value interest rate, that's kind of the middle of the words down here. So that, we want that number to be north of 3%, so we're, we're well above that. So we did really well, basically saving on this bond if we had not refunded it. We, you know, we saved you a good amount of money that you can use towards something else in the future. The next page, the only thing that I'm, you know, this is not a lot different than last, or two months ago, but the line 2020, when I showed you this in March, was more like 61.5% for the percentage of your debt limit you used, and, you know, we're just, go to the right a little bit there, Linda, where it says 5994, you know, so we're able, because of the downsizing, we're able to not use as much capacity, so that was good, too. But the only thing else that I gave you is just to show you how crazy the rates have been since I came to see you, because I came to see you when things were, you know, we were just talking about things going down, and, and I think probably that first real deep V there is where I came to see you, and that all those ups and downs have been since. So it's been pretty crazy, but I think that line way to the right where it's going down, from what I just read from somebody while you were discussing something, will come down even more this week. So I think we, we hit the market at a good time again. So I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Dave? No questions?
It was exciting, wasn't it? I told you.
I guess you did a really good job, Dave.
You just had everybody's tape get a little snooze, right?
Anything else for Dave?
We, we did, we did well. I, I'm happy it turned out the way it did. Thank you, Dave.
It, it turned out pretty good. There's a form that I also emailed to Linda that, that'll need to be signed, and I think you're gonna do a roll call vote anyways, but if you could do, do that as well anyways.
Okay. Anything else? If not, a roll call vote, Barb, please.
Todd Jerry.
Aye.
Cindy Ostrander.
Aye.
Todd Zimmer-Mantik.
Aye.
Jason Reeves.
Aye.
Jim Brash. And Tim Doolittle.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Was that 7-0?
Six.
Six, okay. I didn't count, I shouldn't, so. Very good, thank you.
You did a good job.
Thanks. Have a good rest of your meeting.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, move on. Anything else under Finance, Personnel? If not, Planning Commission, Jason.
I will put forward resolution 200519-3, approval of certified survey map, Scott Beesaw, 420 Hickory Street.
Put on the floor, a second.
Second.
Seconded by Tim. Discussion.
This went through Planning Commission. He's just basically combining two lots. That's really all that happened there, so.
Just out of curiosity, what is the benefit to that? I mean, why does one do that?
A couple reasons. Sometimes you just want to simplify your tax bills, so you only get one, but most people combine them so that they can build secondary buildings or expand a secondary building on the other lot. So if you wanted to, if your garage was on the second lot, that used to be legal, it's not legal anymore, so you want to add on to it, you want to do siding on it, whatever, you're gonna have to combine your lots, or, or you're, you don't have a legal, right now, you're just grandfathered in, it's legal non-conforming.
So I take it that garage was grandfathered up?
Yeah.
Any other questions? If not, roll call, please, Barb.
Todd Jerry.
Aye.
Cindy Ostrander.
Aye.
Todd Zimmer-Mantik. James Brash.
Aye.
Jason Reeves.
Aye.
And Tim Doolittle.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, Public Safety, Todd.
Move to the floor, our Public Safety report for the month. And it is in the agenda packet for today.
Any discussion on the Public Safety report?
Joe had a question for us, right?
Yeah, just to keep you in the loop, it was, as you know, it's been a crazy last week to 10 days with, with the rulings from the Supreme Court and everything else. So we were adjusting on the fly and attended multiple meetings with the other chiefs in Department of Health. We finished our hiring process. We're looking at a candidate named Josh Berg. He has a few more hoops to jump through before he can come aboard. We're hoping by June 2nd to bring him on board full-time. He graduates the academy on the 28th. One other thing is, we discuss this, I think, every year. We're getting numerous complaints again about the area by the treatment plant that people are fishing by. They access it through the treatment plant, which I am 100% positive it's not considered a park. And it's littering, foul language, public urination, and so I got my phones ringing from the new, the new homeowners down there, the old homeowners down there, and like I said, we bring this up every year, it seems, and I, I think maybe my suggestion is we close it down. I guess I'm open for opinions. We really can't, because it's not on the agenda, it's just for discussion right now, to get your feelings on it.
Steve, what's your feelings? Steve Belkey?
Comments? I guess we have had some complaints in the past from people fishing down there. They don't like to follow the rules. Yes, when they, especially when they fish in the winter, we for daily garbage on the ice. You know, they, they urinate on the ice. There's, like Joe said, there's been complaints for the last few years, so.
And they're not discreet about anything. They're also bouncing their lures off the boats that are tied up on the shoreline and causing damage to it, and, and they're not little fishing boats that sit there, they're actually nice boats.
Yeah. Are we thinking about shutting it off for ice fishing then also?
I think just eliminate altogether.
You'd only be able to, to eliminate the, the people's property.
Correct. You can, you can access it by water, so if you come in off the river, whether it's ice or open water, it's, it's a public waterway, but I think my, my suggestion is we close it down to foot traffic.
Lot, any comments?
Yeah, are you indicating that the only way to get to this area that they're causing issue is to go across city property?
Correct.
And the city property is the wastewater treatment plant?
Correct, which is fenced in.
So how do they, how do they get around it?
There, it's just outside the fence.
That's where they walk?
Yes, they park just outside the fence, and they walk down to the channel, so.
It is designated as a park in the comprehensive plan and everything?
It is a park?
Yeah, it's Hillside Park.
Oh.
So we'd almost have to abandon that as a park.
Yep, I would think this would have to go to the Plan Commission to take it off the park, and then designate it as wastewater treatment property, and then sign it with trespass to eliminate foot traffic to that area. And as Jim pointed out, you can't close access from the navigable waterway, but you certainly can close off foot traffic if you have the ability to indicate it's your property, which it appears to be, but Barb's correct, if it's listed as a park, we gotta send it to Plan Commission to remove it. And back to council.
Should that go to Parks Committee also?
Yeah, I would put it on both agendas.
Okay, I think we're gonna maybe meet in, end of June.
Okay, I mean, whatever expedites it for Joe. I mean, I assume you're, you're fielding these complaints, you're citing them with whatever you have witnesses to.
Well, the problem that we have is that they call us and tell us about it, but by the time we get over there, they're, they're gone, and we have no idea who they are. And, and I know from just running random plates up there that 90% of them aren't even from town. You know, they're out-of-towners that are coming there to fish.
No, makes absolute sense that if it's a problem area, let's close it off to access, and then if they go through or around or jump in the water and come back out, then they're trespassing.
And from what I understand, there's this, the, the hoses that are along this channel have formed an association and are working with the DNR, and they're gonna do some weed killing, I think, kind of like we did in Miller Park last year. So I don't know when that's gonna happen, but that's gonna be, have to be closed off anyways, because people can't get to that water for, I think, 48 or 72 hours. I'm not sure what it was.
Okay.
I will put this on the Planning Commission agenda then for the next one.
When is the next Planning Commission?
It'd be the second Tuesday in June. Don't have a calendar in front of me right now.
June 9th.
Okay.
How many complaints are you actually getting, Joe? Like, is there more during the summer than there is the winter? Because I know a lot of young kids that like to go down there fishing, ice fishing especially.
Yep, I, I agree with that, but it's, it's mainly in the winters when it's happening, because they just pop out their little shacks and just urinate wherever they want. I mean, there's one member down there that actually has a video of a guy doing it a couple weeks ago, just blatantly urinating, not walking behind a tree or nothing.
Any more comments?
For that individual, you could cite if you could find him.
Exactly.
I guess I'm kind of against shutting it all down just because of a few bad apples. I'd rather see some other inventive way for enforcement. Maybe we can get some cameras or something. But otherwise, we'd have to go the route of abandoning it as a park, which is fine. But, you know, I, I've gone down there a few times. I liked it. It's a nice place to fish.
But the problem is cameras will give you a picture of the person, but who is it?
Sure, but if you had one by the, where they're parking, too.
No, that would take, that would cost a lot of money, and I know we talked about it before about possibly putting a porta potty out there, and I don't feel that if you put it up by the road, they're not gonna walk all the way up to 100-yard walk. They're not gonna walk up there and use it. You know, it's gonna be more waste of money.
Well, I'm surprised that it would take, I mean, if you're down there ice fishing and somebody calls somebody in for public urination, that it would, I mean, like you just said, it's a 100-yard walk. To me, that would give plenty of time to respond to confront the problem.
If they call us when it's happening.
Right, right, yeah. Behind, you know, hindsight, you're not gonna do anything, but, you know, I, I'm just, I'm kind of with Jason. I've read, just from past experience, I grew up... you know, I, I'm just, I'm kind of with Jason, I've read, just from past experience, I grew up going down there, it's, it's, it's.
Is there another entrance into the park? The only place is adjacent to the wastewater treatment.
No.
No, there's another entrance?
The mouth of the river.
That's it, it's through the river, through the treatment plant, that's it.
That's it, the only way you get to the park?
Yep.
It's, that's the public, public access, there's still private access, but it's.
Through people's houses.
Right, people's cars, yeah.
Yeah, they sound like they're not too happy about.
Well, that's across the, that's across the river, they're not too happy about it.
Oh, it's the other side of the river.
Okay.
But they, they need to take some responsibility, they need to call you as it's happening.
Right.
That's anything in town, if, if there's a problem, they need to call you when it's happening, not a week later and tell you it, it has happened.
Is there any signage down there at all that you know, has, I mean, it's kinda pointing out the obvious, but, uh, that, you know, these things are against the law and it could be cited for it. And like, it's, it's pointing out the obvious, but, uh, you know.
Everybody, everybody knows that's against the law.
Right, I understand that.
There is no park in the net zone there.
Shouldn't have to put up a sign for everything so people behave, that's just.
So consensus is we send this to the park committee?
And planning.
And planning commission.
Is that the consensus?
That consensus?
I don't know if that's a consensus.
I'm in favor.
Anybody object, raise your hand? One, two objections. Okay. Any more discussion on this? Anything else, Joe?
No, I don't have anything else.
Okay, anything else for Joe or anybody?
Joe, would you say that traffic's picking up in town the last week or so, it for a while, it seemed like you guys had a lot less going on?
Yeah, well, that's, that was the month of April, um, your report that you got, but we've noticed it's, it's starting to increase, our calls are going back up again. Um, we're getting back to normal.
Okay, uh, public works, Todd.
Uh, your public works monthly report is in your packet. I see, uh, we're running into some more well issues yet, or is that getting better, Steve?
Um, yeah, it's getting better, last week, uh, Sands well drilling, they, they pumped the well for forty-eight hours, and they, and they pumped it at different gallons per minute, everywhere, anywhere from three hundred gallons per minute up to over seven hundred gallons per minute, and the results were, the harder they pumped it, the more gallons per minute, the more sand that was in was pulled out of the well in the water, so at three hundred gallons per minute, there was pretty much no sand, so, you know, our goal when we started this was three hundred gallons per minute out of the well, so it looks like three hundred gallons a minute will have, uh, clear water. So it did, the, uh, conditioning of the well did, did work, so they took water samples and, uh, we're still waiting for the results. Uh, they, part of the water samples will be for the combined radium, and that's gonna be about six weeks out, so so the water is getting better.
Then, uh, I've had a lot of people asking me about the getting into landscaping done, and I see that's in there, these, until it gets warmer, well, how
Well, they're, they're supposed to be in this week, and I, you know, obviously now it rained, so I'm hoping, I'm hoping tomorrow, if not, I'm gonna give the engineers a call and you know, they're gonna have to actually tell me what's going on here, so.
Yeah, I see some people, they're actually weed whacking.
Alright, yeah, yeah, so.
Resolution, Todd?
I would like to place resolution two zero zero five one nine dash two A, and resolution two zero zero five one nine dash two B on the floor for consideration as split in the email that you received today.
Motion on the floor, second?
Second.
Second by Tim, discussion.
Steve, you wanna explain the split there?
Um, just for the road paving?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the first part of this, um, northeast asphalt, those obviously the, the low bidder, so the first part, uh, the North Webster, uh, finishing off being paved, Fox Trail from, from, uh, North Webster on the pine. Uh, that came in at the hundred and thirty-seven thousand, um, half of that is gonna be we get reimbursed for half from the, uh, county's local road improvement project. Um, the original estimates for that were, should have been around two hundred thousand dollars, so that's, again, we're getting really good bids that came in. Um, so we'll have extra money to do more, uh, chip ceiling maybe this year. Um, so the second part of the, of the bid was to finish off the paving, uh, behind that one hundred block of West Main down by the seawall, uh, that came in at twenty-five, a little over, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars, again, the original estimates for that were around thirty-four thousand, so those came in much lower, so uh, you know, overall, we got really good pricing this year.
Hey Steve, when you do the part on Ma- Main Street there, are you gonna be doing all of that, or just right along where the, uh, new seawall and stuff was put in?
Uh, no, it's gonna start, um, up on the east end, kinda the end of the Lockbridge. All the way down to, I had it marked out, um, we're gonna do quite an area, all the way down to, uh, the dumpsters area, you know, all the way on the west end, and kind of up, uh, when you, north of the dumpsters there, maybe, uh, I think it was about thirty feet, so most of that will be re, repaved back there. Uh, we had to go that far to make it work for that catch base, and that was put in uh, along the seawall to make the, 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 the angle correct, so the water will drain for that, so that's why that whole area had to be expanded, plus it needs to be uh, repaved back there anyway, so, and that was a good time to do it.
Any more questions for Steve? Any more questions on the resolution? Roll call, vote, please, Barb.
Todd Jerry?
Hi.
Cindy Ostrander?
Hi.
Todd Simromantic?
Hi.
James Brash?
Hi.
Jason Reeves? And Tim Doolittle?
Hi.
Motion carried, anything else for public works?
Nope.
Next, utility, Tim.
Your packet from Steve is in your, uh, on your agenda, if you have a question, Steve is here to answer them.
Any questions? Okay, uh, Parks, Jason.
Oh, you have the report in your packet, um, says Scott and Sterns Park Restrooms are open, so which wash, restrooms are relieving closed?
That'll be a discussion when we get to my section about opening up the rest, but right now, we don't have the Miller Park Restrooms open, what else is not open? The other Scott Park ones down by the big shelter are not open yet.
Right, the rest are closed, it's just, uh, you know, the, the lower Scott and Sterns are open, the rest are all closed, the water's on to them, they're ready to go, it's just whenever you want them open.
Okay, I guess we'll discuss that later.
Yeah.
Anything else on Parks?
How bad was the gas leak down at the pool?
It was bad enough where, uh, there was, someone called me and there was a message on my answering machine Monday morning, saying they could smell gas. And, uh, uh, so I got ahold of, uh, GRP Mechanical, and they, they said they actually found three, three leaks in there, so.
Just in all the fittings, or?
Yeah, 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 one had, one was, they said was pretty big, so. Luckily, it's vented well.
Okay, next, library, Cindy.
Yes, the library report is in your packet.
Any questions? Okay, uh, Cindy, you wanna go on to the community development?
That also is in, uh, the community development, monthly report is in your packet.
Stephanie, any comments?
No, it's all there, I guess, thank.
Anything going on that you wanna bring forth, or no?
Not right now, we're still in discussions of details and finalizing everything that we can finalize, so.
Okay, thank you. Administration, Linda.
Yeah, I sent you an email today, um, with my administrative report, cuz I don't think it's on there, is it? I didn't see it. So, um, anyways, the first section was on the whole COVID situation, and that was before the county dropped everything and without notice on a Friday night. Um, thank you so much, um, but, uh, basically, that just talks about the things we're gonna talk about tonight, and it talks about, um, you know, a- all of us having uh, each other's backs, um, you know, looking out for each other and making sure that we all do things as safely as possible. Um, thinking about those in our community that have immunity issues, and we know some of them very well, some of them are children, and making sure that we make good choices, um. Under Congress, I talked about QuickTrip, um, their plan is to build next year out on the east end of town, it might be the year after that based on the way everything's going right now, um, we have been working, their annexation was approved at the state level, though we have to still go ahead and do, um, ordinances and paperwork here, so there's a lot to be done with that, we also have to, uh, do a certified survey map, we have to do a TIF amendment, those meetings we're preparing for and and writing up all the, the, um, project plans that go with that, um.
Hey Linda, with, uh, the QuickTrip being out there, is, is anybody concerned about the intersection? Cuz even the intersection by the Piggly Wiggly, there's a bad one, and now we're gonna add another one up there, is, is there any plans of roundabouts, stoplights, any talk of anything?
That was a discussion, those are, that's completely, uh, state controlled, um, the state has approved the QuickTrip, uh, going there and, and, um, have not, ha- have any, they haven't had any concerns about the intersection that's there, there is a turn lane there, we did talk about that a little bit, you know, there's gonna be truck traffic there, just like there is up by the Piggly Wiggly, um, I guess it's, it's yet to be seen, maybe it'll slow things down, but um, until we get some curb and gutter all the way down there, the state probably won't slow things down, but we'll see, um.
Yeah, they're gonna be going a little faster through there, right, coming into town right there.
Yeah, yeah, they do have that turn lane, um, they and the state feel that it's sufficient. So, unless the state starts to disagree with that, it is what it is, but I don't know if it's something we can force or something we want to force, uh, Joe, I know you were part of that conversation, weren't you?
With that conversation we had?
Yeah, I think we had it, and then I had it at planning commission too, so, yeah.
Yeah, there, I really, that turn lane that they have there, I don't see it being enough for the amount of traffic that's gonna come in and out of there.
I think it's gonna be a tricky one.
Or they gotta take the speed limit, you know, it's forty-five there, they gotta move it to thirty-five, uh, farther.
Um, so, one of us probably needs to talk to somebody at the state level, I don't know who that would be, but we'll have to talk about that. Um, otherwise, uh, we have had seven city loans that we've given out for twenty-five hundred dollars apiece to downtown businesses. Um, there is an eighth one that we haven't talked about yet, so that one, I'm not sure if it'll happen, but, um, um, other than that, working on the Open Gov budgeting program, trying to get that to integrate with our, with our accounting system, um, finishing out our audit here. Safe House of Schools still continues cuz we have, we're filling the, we have some grants that are still left to put items within the building, and the loan paperwork that we have to finish up for the Miller Park project was on my list, so that is it for that. Um, next, I would have somebody put on the floor, uh, the resolution extending the emergency, and we can talk about that after it's on the floor.
Somebody wanna put that on the floor?
I'm moving to the floor, I'd like to move to the floor, resolution two zero zero five one nine dash five, a resolution extending declaration, declared emergency in the city of Amro.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Cindy, discussion.
So, the one we had expired, and whether we need to continue this or not is, is a good question, um. So far, everything that happens, happens in such a quick form that you never, you, you, we don't expect that, you know, on a in the middle of the night, we're gonna find out that the state dropped something, and on a Friday night, we're gonna find out the county dropped something, or that the county started up something, and the county could start something again tomorrow, I don't know. And the state could change their mind tomorrow, I don't know, you know, we might have a hotspot right here in Amro next week, you know, so, that would be the reasons that we would keep this in place, uh, pretty much gives the mayor and I the right to make decisions on the spot, and then as soon as we can get back to you, we get back to you guys. Um, the other option is, we have a lot of emergency meetings, so how do you, I don't know how you wanna handle it, if we continue on as we've been doing, and then, uh, bringing things to you as, as we have a meeting, or, or keep you informed as they happen.
Linda, do you know, has the care center or the assisted living, have they been tested, do you know?
Don't know.
Okay, cuz I know some, they're starting to reach out to the smaller cities, I think, uh, Marcus and assisted living there, or the care center there was getting tested pretty much as we're speaking, I was just wondering if they were coming in Amro yet.
I haven't heard.
Hey Linda, when do you see us getting back together, either in the basement, in the council chambers? Or if you don't think that's enough room for spacing out at the community center? I think the sooner we can get back to a face-to-face, I realize we got a little bit to go yet, but I think the sooner the better, it's easier to have our discussions when you're looking at each other.
Yeah, you know, my opinion on that, Tim, I, I agree, it's easier, I, I enjoy being in a room with everybody, I also feel like we need to be an example. So, that's my opinion, so, but it's not my choice, so, you guys, you guys can have that discussion, that's really not what this resolution is for, but we can have it after the resolutions. Decided.
What is the exact purpose, purpose of this resolution then, is just to give you and Steve the authority to do what needs to be done in a hurry?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
I wasn't quite sure exactly what it was for, how come there's also a second part of this right above with, uh, Jason Basting Mayor and a Candace Coffin City Clerk? Well, that's all on the same resolution, they just get copied and pasted from somebody else's, or?
I deleted it, I don't know why it's still on there, so, it, just that whole upper section has to be deleted.
The whole, upper or the whole lower, where are we at?
Upper portion is deleted, then ours is on the next page.
Oh, we're on the next page, so, look at page three, don't look at page two.
I've read this twice, I'm like, who is Jason Basting and who's Candace Cofflin?
I stole it.
I just spat a little less out of you, Linda.
I stole it from Iowa. Just, just a quick, uh, extension of ours is basically all it's for, but ignore those first two pages, we'll get rid of it.
Any comments on this, Lot?
Um, I'm, I'm okay with this generic authority to give reactive powers to the mayor and the city administrator. Um, obviously, the common council needs to trust the mayor and the city administrator to make reasonable decisions in light of circumstances that may change associated with COVID, it doesn't put in place anything other than um, I think we keep in place the policy associated with employment with the city, correct, Linda?
What are you referring to, I'm sorry?
The other materials in your email, you, you have.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'll be, you know, I have those in here, and, and we'll be talking about them right after this, to say, okay, this is what I, what I've done, and because I didn't have this in place, I haven't handed that out yet, now normally, I would have handed it out two days ago, and all the changes. Now normally, I would have handed it out two days ago and all the changes were made on Friday night, or yesterday, I should say, when all the changes were made on Friday night, that changed what our employees were allowed to do. So now, okay, I should be updating this, but because we don't have those powers yet, I waited for you. Normally, I would hand it out and then I'd say, here's what I handed out and you guys could change it afterwards, you know, but.
All right, so when we adopted this thing back in March, did we also have rules and regulations for the conduct of employees?
I had brought some forward the same night and the council, I had already handed them out in the council or after that, I, no, after that, I think I put them in place and then the council approved them afterwards.
Okay.
I remember.
All right, so those are, those are a separate matter other than this declaration of emergency.
Yeah, the declaration is just giving us authority in case something happens. I'm hoping we don't have to keep doing this.
I guess I want to know exactly what the terms, conditions and authorizations are from that resolution of the 2003 17-5.
Okay, let me bring that up. 317. Let's see, Resolution 317 states, whereas, 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 this enables the city of Amro pointier designate of the mayor to use his authority to issue such orders, including but not limited to carrying out the following duties. The power to direct emergency response activities by city departments, the power to execute contracts for the emergency construction, repair or public improvements. These are out-of-state statutes. With delay of advertising and public bidding, so that's probably nothing we would ever have to do. Power to purchase or lease goods and services deemed necessary to the city's emergency response or for the repair of city facilities or both upon following the procedures regarding emergency procurements. So that might be something that you would run into. Say there is a safety issue down at the parks, we got to put up screens to keep people away from each other, I don't know. That would be something that might happen, but doubt it. Power to lease property or structures, nothing that would probably happen. Power to promulgate rules and orders to implement and clarify the proclamation exercising emergency power. That would be the most used item. The power to delegate all these duties to appropriate city personnel. So the main item, so those are right out-of-state statutes. That's everything that's listed, but that's what the statute allows. The main item is the power to promulgate rules and orders to implement and clarify the proclamation exercises, exercising emergency powers.
And, and as Linda pointed out, this is statutory and this, this was clarified by the League of Municipalities. And cities can use those powers to implement certain actions. And so all you're doing is leaving the door open in case we have an outbreak that you react quicker than getting the council back together. So it makes absolute sense to have it out there, provided you trust the mayor and the city administrator to make reasoned decisions.
I mean, I would be getting, if it's anything other than I'm just telling the employees, hey, you guys got to do this today or whatever. It's going to be, if it's something serious, I'm going to be getting you guys
Together.
Together, and I'm going to be getting you an email saying, hey, we're having an emergency and this is what's going on. And if you have a problem with it, let me know quick because we're going to do it and then we'll get together and, you know. So I don't know what that would be. It probably won't be anything, but the way things keep changing around here, I never know day to day if we're going to have some kind of emergency that we have to have some kind of reaction, so. That's what this is for. If you don't want to have it, then we would just have emergency meetings. And how fast can we have an emergency meeting, Lud?
I, I think you can do it in 12 hours notice.
Actually, two hours for emergency. You got two hours, two hours for emergency.
So that's an option if I can get enough of you together that quick, so.
Again, not to sound like a broken record, I have no problem with this being in place. You've got a city administrator that's been in the business for a long, long time. At the end of the day, she's not going to run roughshod over the rights of others. She's going to react to an emergency situation and then call a meeting of the common council to get your input into the decision she made.
Any more discussion on the resolution? If not, a roll call bar, please.
Hi Jerry.
Hi.
Cindy Ostrander.
Hi.
Todd Sumromantic.
Hi.
James Brash. Jason Reeves. And Tim Doolittle.
Hi.
Washington carried. Linda, more?
Okay, so back to, where were we? Next on the agenda, okay. Back to COVID items, so back to the email that I had sent out, I'll just go down the list. So I sent you all a new employee handout. I have not, like I said, I have not handed that out yet. There's changes on there that are in yellow. Basic changes that I made to it were because of the dropping of the state orders and the county orders, there's no safe red home officially in place. That doesn't mean that I'm not asking the employees, the same as I'm asking you to, to be an example. With that, though, I really stepped back a little bit on the travel because really, where can you go that you, you could go down to the QuickTrip right here and touch a gas pump and catch coronavirus? So going over to Green Lake, it might be safer, it might not because all the Illinois people are coming up and they got 96,000 cases down there, right? So who knows? But if they're going to go on a plane, if they're going to go out of state, if they're going to go out of country, then we still have concerns that we have to talk about whether they have to quarantine when they come back. If they go someplace and they feel that they were at a high risk, you know, how should they react when they come back? If they go someplace and they come back sick, you know, how do they react? So those are the things that are listed on there. I'm kind of making this stuff up as I go based on what I'm reading because it's, it's a difficult, it's a difficult thing because it, every day, the rules change. But, so that's basically what I did with the city employee handout. If you have any issues with that, let me know. I'm going to be handing it out tomorrow. Shelter rentals and restrooms. I'm assuming that we're opening all restrooms and we're opening all shelters, so I guess I need, I need, you're okay on that? The Department of Health and Social Services suggests no gatherings, period. But there's no orders in place. So basically, we've left it at personal responsibility. We're trying to write up some guidelines of best practices. So I guess I would need a motion as to whether or not you want to open shelters and restrooms for the season. We do have a lot of them booked. We are telling people that if they cancel at the last second, we're giving them their money back. I have a lot of people asking me, should I have my event? And I did put something out on the city Facebook page saying, here's the Department of Health and Services answer to that, here's the CDC's answer to that, here's, you know, general guidelines that you can look at as to whether or not you can keep people safe. Now it's your responsibility to make that decision. So that's where we're sitting right now.
I'll put a motion out there to open things up.
And a second by Jim, discussion.
I kind of agree with the opening them back up because of, we don't, somebody else is gonna, or you're going to have large gatherings at their houses. I mean, it's a chance to recoup a little bit of the money, not much, but hey, right now, the way things are, every little bit's going to help down the road.
That's right, they'll either be at their house or they'll be at the bar or wherever. So it is what it is.
Put in some kind of city commitment to maybe more sanitizing, just to be safe. Like get in there every, I don't know, every day, make sure it's sanitized.
You do that every day already, Steve?
Yeah, the guy is, that's first thing they do every morning is somebody goes in there and sprays everything down, so.
Okay.
Yeah. We just, I mean, if, to do it more, it'll just
That's not
That's getting hard to do, you know.
Is that what we've been doing all along, all these years, every morning stuff?
Yep, yep, yep. They make their own, Saturdays and Sundays also, somebody goes in there and our kid, that's, we have him spray everything down and make sure everything's clean.
Yeah, I think we got to make it up to the individual to do their part too when it comes to doing this. You know, we're thought, we're kind of more or less throwing it in their lap, you know. We're opening everything up and now it's your turn to take the precautions.
I imagine if there's a big surge around here of cases, the county might come in and say, hey, you know, they still can make rules that state no more than 50 people, no more than 10 people. They have the ability to make those laws, the Attorney General, even after what happened at the state level is saying, hey, you know, they may not be able to do, you have to stay in your house or you have to close your business, but they can still say there's a public emergency and we are not allowing gatherings of more than 50 people. The county has those rights, so.
Correct, Linda is absolutely correct and obviously, the county has decided not to exercise that legislative power, so here we go.
Right.
Any other comments, Lud, on it?
No, I just, I like the idea that we put out these, I like these precaution kind of thing. I, I, I think that's a great idea. Setting it up and looking at the one that you had in here, Linda, there's information down here about a WW Waukesha.
Yeah, I just, it's a sample.
Yeah, okay, so then just direct him to CDC and then W E R D C. I think put that little print on the bottom and, you know, whether it's, we recommend you consider or please consider or whatever wording you want, Linda. I think this is exactly what you want to do. You open them up, but you tell people, think, be smart. This is what basically Steve said.
Wanting?
If someone does become infected and needs to go in quarantine, is there any financial obligation for the city to pay for that quarantine duration?
As of their use of the park?
If, if someone from the city staff.
Oh, you're talking about employee question, okay.
Yes.
I'll let Linda answer that.
Our our rules that we set out at the very beginning of this pay for them to stay home if they have these symptoms. It was advised that we don't even ask them for a doctor's excuse because getting a doctor's excuse is not an easy thing in today's world, as you know. So they do have the, if they do have the virus, they can stay home and it is paid for. However, if they get the virus because they flew to New York City, that would be a 14-day quarantine that they would either have to take their own sick leave or be unpaid. So, but if it was to, as of no fault of their own, they didn't do anything that was dangerous. And then we would, we would want them to stay home, so we don't, we want to encourage them in any way we can not to come to work.
That's, that's if they have COVID.
If they have COVID.
Not if they're exposed to COVID.
No, if they have it, if, or if they are feeling ill
Yeah.
and have symptoms of COVID.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Linda on this issue? Suppose we could make them take our, take their temperature, huh?
I do that, you can do that.
Yeah, I guess, I have a question, what, from Joe, as far as, let's say we've got a, they decide to have the pavilion rented and a wedding and then you start getting a bunch of phone calls, how, how are you going to handle that?
With the discussion that we've had with all the chiefs, along with the DA, if we have any violations of any of the rules, we are forwarding that information to the health department. Health department has the authority to issue citations.
Okay.
Because honestly, the DA is not going to touch it with all the unknowns, so we're going to send it right to the, the public health department.
Okay.
So you just need a motion on the parks right now, if you don't have any more questions.
Okay, would the parks include the playgrounds?
Yeah, playgrounds, we already had a vote on that early.
Okay, so that's already open, okay.
Yeah, this, this is rentals, shelter rentals and restrooms. Though, we could add in large park openings. Are you guys going to be allowing large events to rent the entire park? Now, they have to come to us for those closings of the parks. Is that something that the city will be allowing or do we wait for them to ask?
What do you can do about the Fourth of July?
That's still in discussion. We're not ready to announce that yet.
Yeah, stuff like that, I think we should just wait as long as we possibly can. To me, that, that's a benchmark here in Amro.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's go back to what's on the table is opening up parks and park shelters.
Park shelters and restrooms.
Okay, so I think it's fair that you can limit the number of people at the event. If you're concerned about large gatherings at your park, what's to prevent somebody who rents the pavilion from having 1,000 people?
Nothing.
Okay.
They'd have no space for that many people.
I hear you, but
In the shelters.
Yeah, it, but it, they don't have to be in the shelter, they could be in the park, correct?
I don't think we should put a restriction.
Well, it's a legitimate question. I mean, it, it, it's a legitimate question. If you're encouraging groups of 500.
I agree with what the mayor said though earlier that we have to put the ownership on the people themselves. If you don't want to go because you're worried about getting this virus, don't go. If you're going to take the chance and go, then go. Who's going to sit at the gate and count heads for a private party?
But that, again, all I'm raising is the question whether the city wants to set a limit on how many people can attend the event for the rental of a park pavilion. I, we have nothing now, is what Linda's saying.
Right.
And I, I, I'm just raising the question, I'm not suggesting I have the answer. And Joe's point is well taken, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we shifted to the city, but the idea that, you know, you can have too many is possible.
Right, you know, I, I've been generally just, like you say, the CDC guidelines and the, in the, and the WDC guidelines, Department of Health and Social Services guidelines. The most that they anticipated ever getting up to is 250. And I guess, you know, I would just keep showing on the guidelines that this is, this is what, this is what is being recommended, is being recommended. You don't have any large gatherings at all. You know, CDC says anything over 250 is, is not a good thing. They're also saying if you have more than 10 people, if you're expecting more than 10 people that are high risk, you shouldn't have one. You know, so, so there's, different places have different recommendations and it also depends on what is your rate in your area at that time. So right now, we're fairly low, next week it might be higher, you don't know. So each of those, each of those layers changes how many people are supposed to be together according to their guidelines. But I don't know that I want to set those guidelines as much as I want to say, hey, here's somebody's guideline. But I don't know that I wanna set those guidelines as much as I wanna say, hey, here's somebody's guidelines and you make the, we're recommending you follow these, and you make the choice based on those, so.
That's fine, I just, again, raising the question.
If we put a, if we put a number on it, that would do something to the events we already have coming up, the street dance, the Fourth of July parade, the fireworks, all that would be affected by if we put a number on it.
Okay.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
We already have a motion on the floor.
Okay.
Don't we? All right, Bart, we have a motion on the floor.
We have a motion and a second on the floor.
Okay, any more discussion? Uh, roll call, Bart, please.
Todd Jerry?
Hi.
Cindy Osterlander?
Hi.
Todd's a romantic?
Hi.
James Brush?
Hi.
Jason Reeves?
Hi.
And Tim Dolittle?
Hi.
Motion carried, anything else, Linda?
Oh, yeah. Okay, told you it'd be a while. Um, we do not have the kayaks and canoes out, I don't have a way, because we rent out, the canoes and the kayaks go right back up on the rack, we don't know when they come back and leave again, they'll have them for the entire weekend sometimes. Um, we give them the oars and we give them the vest, I don't have a way to clean them here, so I basically just haven't put them back out again. Uh, if that's an issue, let me know, but, right now.
I recommend they stay safe right where they are.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea.
Uh, aquatic center, that's on hold right now. Um, the lifeguards and I have had a lot of conversations, of course, they're just nipping at the bud to open up, because they're, that's their summer pay, right? So we did let go all of the new hires, so the returners, um, we've told them, hey, if you gotta get a different job, go get a different job, but, uh, we'll be calling you if we open back up. And, and the people that were new hires, we, we never put them on the payroll, and we said, hey, next year, you're, you're first in line, we'll let you know, you know, but we, the new hires hadn't even been certified yet, because there's no pools for them to be certified in. Um, and they haven't been trained in any of our safety measures, so it would be quite a few weeks after the decision was made that they would even be able to get certified, if we could find somebody to do it, and, and to get them trained, um, in what to do. So, the returners, if we open up and if we can get them all back here again, um, the discussion has been that we would put all the chairs aside, that they could bring their own lawn chairs to sit in if they wish to. Um, that maybe it would be city-only people, because Oshkosh has closed their pool. And if Oshkosh closes their pool, they're all sitting there going, what is Amro up to about everything that we're doing? Oshkosh people are talking about coming here. Normally, that's great, this year, not so much. So, other things that we've talked about is, um, uh, based on square footage, what would the limit of people coming in be? Should we have more private parties, so that people can rent at, in the evenings from other locations? Um, if, uh, if we'll have swimming lessons or not, it's gonna depend, do they have, are they going to have, um, uh, summer school, cuz most of that gets paid for through the school and through the summer school. And is it safe to have the swimming lessons, since the kids are putting their head right on the lifeguard's shoulders and spitting and sputtering quite a lot, and et cetera, et cetera. So those are discussions we're having, and we'd have to close down the locker rooms on the advice of the CDC, um, and have just the two family bathrooms open, that would have to be cleaned on a very consistent basis. And because of the lack of staff, we would probably close down the deep end and the slides. So, we'd love to see the pool open, we do have to fill the pool, we do have to run the pumps, we do have to test the heater. Um, so a lot of those expenses are going to happen anyways, we have to keep things trimmed and, you know, that kinda stuff, but, but, uh, and, and the pool cost is quite a bit of money each year, but most of that is because of payroll. So if we're cutting the payroll in half, it won't cost us quite as much either. But we won't have as much revenue coming in, and we won't have concessions with that, so that helps our revenues. Uh, it's an iffy, iffy thing, I don't know if you have any opinions on the whole pool thing. Nobody seems to know in any city what they're going to do, so we had about maybe a quarter on closed, and all the rest are going, I don't know, so, nobody's made a decision yet, and, and we're definitely opening, that's not happening, so.
I think it's really enough, we can do the wait and see on that yet.
Do you say?
I guess I'd like to see, uh, like a discussion move forward with a limited capacity, limited hours type thing. You know, like, say, we're gonna try to get this open, but we're gonna limit it. And then, and see what kind of discussions and ideas we can come up with from there and move forward, so that we're at least looking at, if we can do this, we're gonna do it, but we're not gonna just open the doors and let a free-for-all happen.
Yeah, that's my plan, I don't know what you think of having it city only, since our city taxpayers pick up the majority of the costs of that pool.
I like that idea.
Yeah, might get a little kickback from our township kids, but at least school district-wise, if nothing else, but.
I would agree with the school district versus just the citywide, because, yeah, I know the city's the one who pays the tab on it. But these kids all go to school together, and a lot of times they wanna swim with their friends. I would say at least go to a school district.
Hey, somebody wanna make a motion that we do it right away, or hold off, or a little bit, or whatever, what's your pleasure?
I'd say let's hold off till our next meeting at least, and see where things are going.
Okay.
I second that.
A motion and second, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pause, motion carried.
The last thing on my list, you know, I'll go and thank God, um, is the landfill. Um, when everything went into lockdown here at City Hall, as things warmed up, people wanted to go to the landfill, and, and our normal, uh, mode of operation is that people come here, they get a key, they sign out, um, and they're in and out all day long doing that. It's busier than you would think. Um, I think the retired guys just like to go to landfill. But, but, uh, when we locked down, we're like, well, how are we gonna do this? We don't, we don't have a way to get them keys, and there's gonna be a lot of contact. So we stopped giving keys and we opened the gates in hopes that, uh, people would behave. People did not behave, um, we had, uh, some furniture dumped there. We've had people hiding bags of leaves behind the pile of leaves, so then we have to go out and find those and empty them, cuz it's a, it's, we're, we're under a county permit, so it has to be clean filled. Um, somebody put bricks in the middle of the, of the woodpile, which is not good, because we pay somebody to come in with a chipper, and if we wreck their chipper, we buy their chipper, so that wasn't a good move. Um, so we locked the landfill during the week. Um, now, yesterday, we opened back up City Hall. Uh, landfill's open on, from eight till twelve on Saturday mornings, and it's manned, and we check for, oh, the other thing is, we get people from out of town, and they, they found out it was open, so they're showing up here. Um, so, the question becomes, I don't know if you have more ideas with that, Steve Bilkey, but, uh,
Um, we had thought about, if they want it, maybe we'll open it up on a Wednesday afternoon, from noon to three. Otherwise, it's, like Linda said, they're not following the rules. And then it costs, we have to go out there and clean it all up, so, and it's always a, you know, a few bad apples.
And, how is it, how many times do we have problems when we are just giving out keys? Cuz we're not checking what's on their trailer, we're, we're trusting them, but.
Right, and it's, it's not too often, I think what happens is someone sneaks in behind someone who has a key, so they go in at the same time and dump something and, and get out of there, so. But, yeah, like I said, it was only open there for, what did we do, for a couple weeks, and we had, we had enough problems where it's, it's, you know, it's not worth it, you know?
So are you saying, on that Wednesday afternoon, you'd have an employee there for the time that it's open?
Well, I think if it's just one afternoon, we could, someone can at least make rounds out there. You know, I don't know if I, if I could, right now, if we can station someone out there. But at least if you limit it and set it, it's, it's, you know, otherwise it's a free-for-all from eight in the morning until three in the afternoon. That's how it was before. So I think if we can limit them, you know, otherwise they got Saturdays, Saturday mornings, you know, Saturday mornings are popular, you know, so, that, that's when it's normally open, so.
Are we having a lot of discussion from citizens complaining that they can't get access to it?
I have not heard much yet. Um, actually, everybody's been pretty understanding. Uh, I put it out on Facebook, and I didn't have a single person complain, they were all just like, ah gee, people, you know? But, um, I imagine as it gets warmer here and people start mowing their lawns, we'll, we'll start hearing more.
Maybe we could figure out some kind of a different signup option, like an online thing? And then, we could, you know, you get a timeframe that you get to go out there maybe, but we know you're there.
Yeah, thing it, thing is that then we'd still have it open, and they're gonna go in there when it's open, they drive by and see it. Um, you know, I mean, we can give keys, but there's a lot of contact going on, they're gonna be coming here, they're gonna be, you know, we're gonna have to clean the keys, we're gonna have to, they're gonna be touching the gates, they're gonna be touching the locks, you know? If that's a good idea or not, but.
Why don't we just stick with Saturdays until we find out how this pandemic is gonna turn out?
I know the townships do that, that's all, the only time they can go in the town is on Saturday. Everybody knows it, they all go on Saturday, so.
Then, then we'll know it's monitored and have control over.
You know, and I've had people who say, I just can't, they've called me and said, I can't make it on a, on a Saturday, can you help me out? And I'll just, fine, I'll meet you out there at, today at eleven, and I'll let them in, and they can dump, and I'll, you know, but I don't want that to be call, 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 either, you know, but I mean, we do, we do try to work with people, you know, we understand.
I think we'd leave that up to you, Steve, on case by case.
Yeah, right.
Maybe you could, uh, schedule like, uh, two times in a month, or something to that effect, that where we could have it open a little more, like you're saying with the Wednesday or something?
Yeah, why don't we like, I agree with what the mayor said, why don't we just, you know, we'll see how it goes? And if there's a big demand, like I said, I don't have a problem on a Wednesday afternoon for a few hours.
And I don't have a problem giving somebody a key either, if, if, you know, today is the day the guy's coming to cut down my tree, and he's gonna be, you know, needing a place to take the branches, you know? We can, we can open it for them for those kinda things, right, Steve?
Right, right.
When it, when it's manned, is that a paid employee, or is that a volunteer?
It's a parks employee, yeah, it's one of the summer kids, sits out there on Saturday mornings, they, they like the extra money. And then they write down, you know, and as the people come in, they have to write down their, their address, they ask them for, you know, your address, and what, and they look and write down what they're bringing in, so.
Yeah, I've been out there a couple times already this year, and they didn't look at what I was bringing in, cuz it was in my van, but they did take my address, and.
Because we do have a problem, somehow, the, there was a rumor that the town of Amro people could use our landfill. So, that's why we like to check addresses, so.
Yeah. I knew that was a thing, but they weren't looking, he didn't ask either, it was an older gentleman, I don't know who it was.
That's probably, that's Brian.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that's good to know.
Yeah, I thought he was a volunteer.
No.
Any more discussion on this?
All I got.
Did you need a recommendation on this, Linda, or just leaving?
Nah, it's, it was more kind of informational and getting your feel on it, so.
Okay, anything else for Linda?
Linda, did you learn anything about, uh, streetlights on Huckleberry?
I sent an email to him, I have not heard back. Sent him the next day, so I have to check with him again to see if he received that, and I know it's a little more complicated than putting, um, streetlights. Like, I had one on Main Street that it was up within two days, because there's already a pole. In this case, this is buried underground, I'm not really sure why, they never got streetlights in the first place, but there's not streetlights the entire way of Huckleberry, all the way past the, um, apartments even, so.
Yeah, it's kinda odd, they're just random in that section there.
But I did send him an email asking about it, he just has not responded.
I don't, I don't believe Wintergreen has any either, right? That whole, when that was put in, I don't think, for whatever reason, there was no streetlights. There's no sidewalk there either, though. Uh, on. Makes a difference? On Wintergreen? Yeah. Oh. There's no sidewalk on that section to Huckleberry, uh, west of, uh, Goldenrod, but there is this one back on the east side, so I wonder if the streetlights are for the sidewalk, or if they're for the road, I don't know. Streetlights are in the corners on those two roads.
Right.
Yeah, everywhere else in town, doesn't matter if there's a sidewalk or not, there's, there's a streetlight that goes with it, but.
Did the developers have to pay for that stuff when it got?
That's what I'm wondering.
It sounds like something that they would skimp on.
Yeah, probably.
Anything else for Linda, or anybody?
Um, are we planning on a Parks Committee meeting on June twenty-second, then?
I'm thinking so, cuz we do need to make some final decisions on the playground, so that we can go ahead and get that ordered, I'm gonna try to hold off ordering that until a little later in the process for the rest of the project, so that we make sure that we don't run into any other issues that need the money. But, um, I, I don't foresee that happening, we do have contingency built in, but I think just to be on the safe side, I'd like to hold off on that, but we do need to finalize it, so we can start fundraising and stuff too.
Anybody else? Meeting schedule, any comments on the meeting, meeting schedule coming up? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn? A second?
Second.
Any, any discussion, I know this has been one of our longest meetings in a while, so, thanks for your participation. So, all those in favor of adjourning, so signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Most, you know, motion carried. Good night, everybody.
Good evening.
Yes, bye.